For our plans to be listened to.
What's your thoughts?
What happens to the United States of America? As China Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are you going to like this?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, I thank you for this day. I thank you for our county and our country. And Lord, I just pray that all the decisions made today will be in your will. And we'll be done with grace, wisdom, and strength. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
So our regularly scheduled agenda for Wednesday, December fourth. Our next public workshop will be next Tuesday, December tenth, then thirty AM in this room. We have a public hearing for a road name change at ten AM one next Wednesday in this room. And then next regular meeting will be next Wednesday at ten thirty AM, December eleventh, also in this room. I don't know. Here. Here. Motion approved. I'm sorry.
Mr. Lisa.
Yeah. Yes.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion approved. Sorry.
Mr. Mr. Lisa.
Yes. Yes.
Item number three is to adopt a resolution approving submitted best purchase orders to the various vendors as done and now purchase orders. October twenty twenty four, in compliance with ORC five seventy zero five, full of my team.
Motion approved. Sorry.
Mr. Lisa.
Yes. Yes.
Item number four is to adopt the submitted uniform values policy. Purpose of the policies to enhance the control environment, the federal grants administered under uniform guidance.
Motion approved. Sorry.
Mr. Lisa.
Yes. Yes.
Item number box two, Commissioner's regular meeting dated March eighth, twenty twenty three. Item number sixteen seventeen. To update ARPA allocation amounts to reflect actual expenditures through Tremble County Fairgrounds Parking Lot Project or Star Roots Project in related professional services. Amendments necessary to correct the amount to reflect the actual expenditures for the project and amend the amount of ARPA authorized funds to, uh, the list. Architectural engineering services. Farming Roots, one lot, thirty six hundred dollars. Replacement of those farm roots, one hundred seventy thousand dollars. Replacement of their lot, one hundred fifty thousand, being reporting hundred dollars and seventy five cents for each activity. Based on awards, change orders, and actual funds expended.
Motion approved. Sorry.
Mr. Lisa.
Yes. Yes.
Item number six is to amend Commissioner's regular meeting agenda dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Item number twenty. To update ARPA allocation announced to reflect actual expenditures to Tremble County Fairgrounds at eighty eight restroom block that. Now, the amendment is necessary to correct the amount to reflect actual expenditures for the project and amend the amount of ARPA authorized funds to commercial building back upgrades. Two hundred thirty eight thousand, two hundred twenty three dollars and sixty two cents for this activity based on awards, change orders, and actual funds expended.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Malloy.
Yes.
Item number seven is to amend Commissioner's regular meeting agenda dated April fifth, twenty twenty three. Item number twenty eight. To update an ARPA allocation amount to reflect actual expenditures for the Tremble County Law Library Professional Engineering Services. This is a provision of professional design services for the monumental stair replacement project for the Tremble County Law Library. Which the county is required to provide legal resource materials to members of the public in an amount not to exceed twenty three thousand, eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Amendment is necessary to correct the amount to reflect actual expenditures for the project and amend the amount of ARPA authorized funds to twenty five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars for this activity based on change order and actual funds expended.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Boy.
Yes.
Item number eight is to award the lowest and best contract to DJV Supplies, Inc. for the Tremble County Planning Commission Carpet Replacement Project. In the amount of twenty one thousand, two hundred seventy six dollars and eighty eight cents. And authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board, to enter into a contract agreement with DJV Supplies, Inc.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
From Malloy.
Yes.
Item number nine is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency. From American Rescue Plan Act Funds, and this is for a Warren Township ambulance. And Commissioners, down a little lower, this is a one-time grant to Warren Township in the amount of one hundred seventy five thousand dollars to be used for the purchase of an ambulance. For use by the Warren Township Fire Department.
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
And then item number ten is to enter into an agreement between the Board of Tremble County Commissioners and Warren Township as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel. To provide funds required to enable the township to purchase an ambulance. For use by the Township Fire Department, which is essential to continue the provision of safety services. Especially with the increase of volume of calls since COVID nineteen pandemic. And the Board of Tremble County Commissioners allocates the sum of one hundred seventy five thousand dollars to the township.
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes. And Commissioner, we have, uh, all three trustees, the Assistant Fiscal Officer and the Fire Chief here. If we can do a check presentation of them.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Come forward. He looks beautiful.
Had some help, lots of help. Is it writing?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
You guys want to come in and go over here? You guys get a little. Come on, Jerry.
I think it's all in, but. Thanks. You're welcome. Continue. Item number eleven is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating. The public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act Funds. And this is for Weathersfield Township Green Space. And Commissioners, on the next page. This is a one-time grant to Weathersfield Township in the amount of one hundred fifty thousand dollars to be used for the installation of four pickleball courts. And associated upgrades within the township park.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
And item number twelve is to enter into an agreement between the Board of Tremble County Commissioners and Weathersfield Township as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel. To provide funds for the installation of four pickleball courts and related improvements to the township park. And the Board of Tremble County Commissioners allocates the sum of one hundred thou- one hundred fifty thousand dollars to the township.
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number thirteen is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency. From American Rescue Plan Act Funds, and this is for Farmington Township Road Project. And then down near the bottom, Commissioners. This is, um, the upgrading of a five thousand, one hundred fifty nine foot section of Township Highway two twenty two between Stroop Hickox Road and Hoffman Norton Road.
A motion to approve. I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item.
There, is there anyone here from Farmington Township? Okay, sir, we'll, uh, get the check. She's got him in the back there. We didn't know you were going to be here in advance, so. Cheryl, if we can get the Farmington Township check, uh, whenever you can, uh, gin one up. In Weathersfield, we had nobody from Weathersfield today, Mr. Ruin or anybody? Okay, we'll get that to them at a later date, but hang on, we'll, when they bring the check in, we'll go to that. Thank you.
Item number fourteen is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency. From American Rescue Plan Act Funds, and this is Mesopotamia Township Road Project. And Commissioners, on the next page, um, this consists of the following road surface repair projects in Mesopotamia Township. County Line Clark Road. Gates East Road. Wilcox Road. Sweet West Road and Laird North Road.
Make a motion to approve. I'll second that in discussion. I want to thank, uh, um, Jacob Yoder and people at Tremble Hardwoods and, uh, businessmen that we met with early on. They had asked about road repair, and I want to thank our Engineers Office, uh, for listening. And then working with the Mesopotamia Trustees, um, to get this done. This was something that came on actually pretty quick. We had a meeting just a couple of months ago. And they had asked for, uh, to work better with the Sheriff's Department and work with, uh, the engineers, and both were, were granted. And, um, I'm happy to, I, I hope the Mesopotamia Trustees are happy over that also.
Hey, Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number fifteen is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act Funds. And this is Village of Lordstown Water Booster System. And on the next page, Commissioners, this is a one-time grant to the Village of Lordstown for two hundred thousand dollars. For costs associated with the installation of an updated water booster system for the water transmission system near Pritchard Old Town Road.
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
And item sixteen is to enter into an agreement between the Board of Tremble County Commissioners and the Village of Lordstown as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel. To provide funds to the village to be used for costs incurred for updating the water booster system. For the water transmission system near Pritchard Old Town Road. And the Board of Tremble County Commissioners allocates the sum of two hundred thousand dollars to the village.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number seventeen is to amend Commissioner's regular meeting of May twenty second, twenty twenty four. Item number twenty two. For the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty one coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund. Tremble County, Ohio, and approve the MOU between the Auditor's Office and the Board in order to carry out the project through completion. Amendment is necessary to increase the committed amount from six hundred ninety four thousand, two hundred forty six dollars to eight hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. For the Marx Tower project to carry out the necessary work detailed in the agreement. Between the State of Ohio DAS and the Board approved on April fifth, twenty twenty three. Particularly the electrical work required to ensure the operational success of the Marx Tower. The MOU is necessary in order to obligate the funds before December thirty first, twenty twenty four deadline.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number eighteen is to authorize change order number one in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars for the contract with GPD Group. For professional services related to the Howland Scope Center Improvements Project. Funded through the PY twenty three CDBG Community Development Grant Program. And to authorize the President, Danny Malloy, to sign the submitted change order number one form. Change order number one is a net increase of nineteen thousand dollars revising the total contract amount. From thirty thousand to forty nine thousand dollars, and the increase is necessary as planned preparation uncovered additional requirements needed to meet building code.
A motion to approve. I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
From Malloy.
Yes.
Item number nineteen is to accept maintenance bond number RCB zero zero four nine eight five six issued by RLI Insurance Company. For the Gerard Multi Generational Center Gym Roof Replacement Project funded through the PY twenty twenty three CDBG Community Development Grant Program. Installed by Freedom Roofing Window Inciting LLC. Freedom Roofing Window Inciting LLC requested final payment for the completed work inspected by John Johns Manville and approved by GPD Group. The maintenance bond is in the amount of twenty percent, thirteen thousand, one hundred seventy eight dollars and eighty cents of the final project cost. Sixty five thousand, eight hundred ninety four dollars and is valid for a two-year period commencing November twelfth, twenty twenty four. And ending November twelfth, twenty twenty six.
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number twenty is to authorize the advertisement of a public notice in a newspaper of general circulation on Thursday, December fifth, twenty twenty four. Announcing the PY twenty twenty four CDBG RPIG second public hearing for the Crane Drive Sanitary Sewer Project. Located in a low and moderate income area of Weathersfield Township. And to authorize the Tremble County Planning Commission to prepare and submit the PY twenty twenty four. Application in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And to authorize the President of the Board of Commissioners, Danny Malloy, to sign and execute. Any and all documents related to the application, administration, receipt, execution, and implementation of funds.
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
From Malloy.
Yes.
Item twenty one is to authorize the Tremble County Planning Commission to complete and submit the program, programmatic. Agreement for the period, January first, twenty twenty five through December thirty first, twenty twenty nine. For coordination between the Board of Tremble County Commissioners and the Ohio State Historic Preservation Office for the administration of programs. Using HUD allocated funds and allocate the President, authorize the President, Danny Malloy. To sign any related documents necessary for the amendment. The current programmatic agreement term is set to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item twenty two is to authorize the Board of Commissioners Clerk to sign the twenty twenty six Ohio Department of Transportation. Office Authorizing Resolution for the Ohio Department of Transportation, twenty twenty six fifty three ten grant application contingent. On the Board of Tremble County Commissioners, including the President of the Board reviewing. The authorizing resolution prior to submission.
Motion to approve. A second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item twenty three is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign the twenty twenty six Ohio Department of Transportation Office. Local match certification for the Ohio Department of Transportation, twenty twenty six fifty three ten grant application. Contingent on the Board of Commissioners, including the President of the Board reviewing the local match certification prior to submission.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item twenty four is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign the twenty twenty six. Ohio Department of Transportation Application Certification for the Ohio Department of Transportation. Twenty. Mike, are you in here? Is that, is that correct, two zero two, or should that be a year? On that one. Just want to make sure I correct it if I need to. I don't, on item twenty four. The, uh.
Before fifty three ten.
Yeah.
Oh, it should be, yeah, this should be two oh two six.
Okay. Twenty twenty six fifty three ten grant application contingent. On the Board of Tremble County Commissioners, including the President of the Board reviewing the application prior to submission.
Make a motion to approve with said changes. I'll second that, and thank you, Mr. Salomone, for correcting that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item twenty five is to amend Commissioner's regular meeting of April twenty sixth, twenty twenty three. Item number twenty seven. That read to approve agreements for her proposals for purchase transportation. For Tremble Countywide Transportation Service. That were awarded for the period May twenty third through November twenty four, twenty twenty four. Amendment is necessary to extend the contracts until February twenty eighth, twenty twenty five per contract terms. And RFP language allowing up to twelve months extension. All contracted transportation providers have agreed to the extended terms.
Make a motion to approve. I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item twenty six is to authorize Mike Salomone, Tremble County Transit Administrator, Diane Siskowick Djakovik, Senior Levy Administrator. And Edward Stark, Superintendent for Tremble County Board of Developmental Disabled to advertise for sealed proposals. For Tremble Countywide Senior and Disabled Transportation Services. Providing on-demand transportation services for disabled residents of any age. And senior residents sixty years of age or older beginning March first, twenty twenty five through February twenty ninth, twenty twenty eight. With a possible monthly extension period not to exceed twelve months.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number twenty seven is to approve change order number four with Carrilla Contractors, Inc. for the Yankee Lake Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project number five dash S dash eighteen. For a decrease in the contract value of two thousand, six hundred fifty two dollars and fourteen cents. Revising the total contract value to two million, six hundred seventy seven thousand, six hundred twenty four dollars and forty four cents. Due to supply chain shortages, delivery of pump station components to the job site is further delayed. The date of substantial completion shall be extended from December thirty first, twenty twenty four to February fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
Yes, Gary, before we vote.
Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. Uh, Commissioners, there's just one typo on this. At, at the very bottom, there should be a negative instead in front of the twenty six fifty two fourteen total amount of change order. I just wanted to point that off.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve. We always like those types of change orders. I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number twenty eight is to approve the personnel action for the employment transfer of Mr. Colin King. From the position of custodial worker, pay range three, seventeen fifty per hour. With the Maintenance Department to position of laborer, pay range three, seventeen fifty per hour. With the Tremble County Sanitary Engineers Department effective Monday, December ninth, twenty twenty four.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item twenty nine is to approve the personnel action for the employment transfer of Mr. Nicholas Clark. From the position of sewer line maintenance, maintenance assistant, pay range six, seventeen fifty two per hour. To the position of plant maintenance worker, pay range eight, twenty thirty one per hour with the Tremble County Sanitary Engineers Department effective Monday, December ninth, twenty twenty four.
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item thirty is to authorize the Board of Tremble County Commissioners Clerk to award all bids for contract service for repair work of water and sewer lines for twenty twenty five. On a per call or as needed basis for the Tremble County Sanitary Engineers Department. In accordance with the specifications as prepared by the Tremble County Sanitary Engineer.
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number thirty one is to adopt a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Tremble County, Ohio, entering upon its journal. The filing of a petition for annexation seeking to annex seven point nine five six one acres of land. Parcel number two eight dash five two 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 zero zero, also known as address thirty nine forty two Youngstown Road. In Howland Township to the City of Warren, Tremble County, Ohio.
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
And, and discussion, just thi- this seems to keep rearing its head, uh, for some odd reason, and I know we have, um, Administrator Pan alone here. Um, that hopefully there's something that can be done in the process. I know this is the first but necessary step in that, but, uh, maybe something could be worked out, uh, before it comes to the Commissioners because, um. As everyone knows, we're statutorily kind of bound when it comes to these sorts of things, so, um, hopefully the City of Warren and, and Howland Township can get together and work something out before it comes to that point.
And, and this has been followed and with John, following with John.
Yeah.
Few times now, so, um. Yeah. Good luck with it.
Hey, Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number thirty two is to adopt a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Tremble County, Ohio, entering upon its journal the filing of a petition for annexation seeking to annex property. Situated in the township of Weathersfield, Tremble County, Ohio. And further known as being all of the new lots, one A of the replat of Lot One of Germer Properties, Inc. Plat number one as recorded at Tremble County Plat Instrument Number. Two zero two four zero seven one one zero zero one one three one five and other adjacent lands as set forth in the petition to the City of Niles.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes. All right, item's number thirty three. Or item number thirty three would be to remove, uh, from the table, a, uh. A motion to have an agreement with Buck Energy Brokers, number thirty four. Is, uh, would be to approve the agreement with Buck Energy Brokers. Number thirty five would be to approve an agreement with Palmer Energy. And number thirty six would be to approve an agreement. with NOPC. Being we have the two of us here, we're supposed to have a workshop that for unforeseen circumstances was canceled. I think we still need to do due diligence to explore this further. We're running out of time here, and I don't see, and I would ask you, Commissioner, this is something that's going to affect all the residents for years to come, or at least the next year. I would, and I guess I would entertain comments from the crowd, too, regarding this, but I would like to push this to the first of the year, so the new board that comes in can educate themselves on this, do their due diligence, and then make an educated vote after they understand the process. There's been a lot of he said, she said allegations and emails, this company did this, this company's illegal here, this company can't is is banned by the court proceeding from this, this company's lying, these rates are false. And I think we need to flush all that in fairness to the public to allow the new board coming in to do due diligence and not just accept something that we pushed through. I don't mean to kick the can down the road. I think we have time. And I don't know, I'd like a consensus from the aggregators here, I guess. If we have time after the first year, would that negatively affect prices for the residents of the county? I know we've heard yes, it would from one entity, another entity has told me via phone that has their conference this week and couldn't be here, that it doesn't affect anything. We're still good in January. So any input from Mr. Bellish or from NOPC?
I would I would just say to that that we would be rolling the dice. I don't think anybody can say that the prices will go up or down.
Correct.
So so that has to be taken into account. The sooner we get this done, I said this last time, the sooner we get this done, the quicker we can lock in a rate and not have, you know, look back with hindsight and say, man, if we'd have locked in at that point, we'd have been at that rate. But so I understand there's a new board coming in. It's not, you know, I don't want to overstep and make a decision for them. But at the same time, I know that time is of the essence when it comes to these rates and striking while the iron is hot is critically important. So I welcome any input from everybody here, I guess.
You addressed the microphone and who you are.
Commissioners, thank you. Ross McDonald, Director of Expansion for NOPC. I just wanted to let you know that the rate that we will offer this board will be the same as the rate we would offer the new board. And that would be a product that's six point four, six point four nine nine for a period all the way through May two thousand twenty-six meter read cycle.
Is that a fixed rate?
Yes, sir. Yep. So same rate today as it would be with the first of the year.
Bellish, do you have anything?
Tom Bellish, President of Buck Energy. I did have a question about that proposal. Now, is that an opt-in rate? Or will all the opt-out letters go and the opt-out letters? Anybody who receives the opt-out letter, get the standard offer, which is a variable price? I'd like to ask that question.
You can answer it.
Brenda Fargo, Membership Development Director, NOPC. No, that will be the opt-out price for the county, as I said in my email that I sent last night. This is a pilot program that we're putting together. Trumbull County would be one of the first. It will be a fixed price for all of the participants through the opt-out program.
Okay, I brought that up because I did see a press release that did say the standard offer would be the opt-out offer, so that's the default offer. And that's the NOPC variable price. So.
If we were to lock in today, what would be the fixed rate currently that you would for the aggregation program?
I would have to get that rate from suppliers.
I mean.
Yeah. That that doesn't. I don't have those numbers.
Okay.
Yeah, I just have, you know, seen what I've seen in other communities, so the bid to Trumbull County, I don't have. So there's another issue that if letters aren't sent out on time, customers go back to Ohio Edison. So that would be very confusing. They get a letter saying the aggregation's over and then start being billed from Ohio Edison and then.
Time frame. Drop that date.
Uh, I've been told by suppliers like mid-December that they need to be contracted because then they have to get the mailing list and they have to create a letter, get approval of that letter and get that to a mailing company. And so that gets can get mailed by like early January.
And I can remember when we last did the aggregation program, we waited a little longer, but not as long. But in but in doing so and striking in December, we were able to get a much more favorable rate than we would have in January, when a lot of people were coming on board. So there is that.
Yeah, yeah, not as many buyers in December, so people come back into work. January prices typically go up, yes, so that we did experience that.
I won't be here, but I am still have a fiduciary responsibility to look out for the citizens and yeah, I think that needs to be taken into account.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I have our hours of things that I could talk about and go for, but I don't think this is the forum.
Well, I will say this. I hope that we can come to, we don't have a full board here today. But I do think it's imperative that by the end of the year, we still look at this and make a decision if that's okay. I think waiting till January could be. We could be losing out on potentially a cheaper rate.
And that could be something also. I know we are the ones with the power with the vote. But if we were to have that workshop or have them all to workshop, we could have the incoming commissioners at the workshop to observe and as the public would be able to offer input or at least know that they're educated on what they're inheriting.
And that would be okay if that's the route we want to take.
Could we do it as early as next Tuesday? Does that work for both the groups?
Well, we don't have the other group here, though, do we?
We don't, but the other group had the opportunity to, and they had a commitment with last week. You know, we can, there's only so many offers we can make, you know. I'd be happy with going forth with two groups and let's schedule for next Tuesday, then ten thirty. And we'll make that part of our workshop next week. And basically, just a one-on-one on the aggregate program. In your simplest terms, we know there can't be any promises. We know there is a new incoming administration coming in, which is going to affect our energy prices worldwide and especially within the U.S. borders. And I think that could be a game changer, I believe personally. I'm not an expert, and by any means do I claim to be in energy, but I just think we need all the education on this. I think right now, there's so much reading one email versus another email that actually contradicts each other. I would like to have the entities in the room to be able to ask questions, have the public ask questions, including the incoming commissioner, so that we can all feel safe, and then we could vote responsibly as early possibly as next Wednesday.
That's fine.
If you want to do it, okay. So so we're not going to remove from the table the top one, but number, I would make a motion to table number thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six.
I'll second it.
From Malloy?
Yes.
Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Hey, I'll skip.
Thank you.
Skip down to item thirty-seven. To accept a revocable letter of credit, maintenance bond number four sixty-two issued by the Farmers National Bank for the term of two years, beginning September fourth, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of four thousand dollars, and release a revocable letter of credit, performance bond number four forty-five issued by Farmers National Bank, dated May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. All work guaranteed under the irrevocable letter of credit. Performance bond number four forty-five has been completed to the satisfaction of the county engineer described in the letter issued by the Trumbull County Engineer dated March second, two thousand twenty-three, in accordance with Trumbull County subdivision regulations.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Malloy?
Yes.
Item thirty-eight is to accept Skyline Lane Township Highway fifteen forty-six into the Howland Township Road System, with the understanding that Trump, the Trumbull County Commissioners accept no responsibility for construction, drainage, or maintenance of said road. Howland Township has given their recommendation for the acceptance, and I'll read the note. Howland Township will ultimately be responsible for maintenance of the road, and the township is satisfied with the current condition and construction.
Motion to approve?
I'll second. I'd like discussion. I asked the administrator on this. How long has this been in the works? What is this going to affect? I need you on the microphone, unfortunately.
Panalone Township Administrator, Howland, I believe our Public Works Director has reviewed this and made comment with it. So we knew this was kind of coming along the past few weeks. I know that there's a two-step process in acceptance and dedication, I believe, is a full process, which is, the other portion is by us. So I have not been privy to any negative impacts here with the whole, with acceptance and or the possible dedication of it, so.
So their house is being built here?
There's already houses there.
Okay.
So Skyline Drive, I think, is probably about two years old, three years old, filled up very quickly. That's immediately adjacent to the Forest Springs allotment right off of Howland Springs. So, yeah, the lots filled up pretty quickly. And there were some buffer items, I think, that our planning director was still working on with them, some minor items. But as far as the road specifications, I know it was coordinated through the county to make sure that that road, when it was installed, catch basins, and all those items, all met the specifications of the county engineer's roadway, public roadway items at the time, so I'm not aware of any negative impacts, but.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, so for item thirty-eight, Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item number thirty-nine is to transfer monies.
A motion to approve?
I'll second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item number forty is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Yes.
Item forty-one is to approve decrease of appropriations.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
For Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item forty-two is to approve transfer of appropriations.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item forty-three is to amend Commissioners' regular meeting agenda dated September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, item number thirteen. And that was to award the lowest responsive and responsible bid, as submitted by APBN, Inc. for the Nile CSX Bridge Painting Project in the amount of three hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars and authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board, to enter into a contract with APBN, Inc. to finalize all documents. Amendment is necessary to correct the fund number to the fund number listed.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item number forty-four is to authorize the Commissioners clerk to advertise for letters of interest for construction, inspection, and administration services related to the TRU Old Town Viaduct Rehabilitation Project. This project includes the rehabilitation of Weathersfield Number Six Old Town Viaduct Bridge, which carries Austintown Warren Road over the Meander Reservoir in Weathersfield Township.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item forty-five is to authorize the Commissioners clerk to advertise for letters of interest for construction, inspection, and administration services related to the TRU South Main Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project. This project includes the rehabilitation of TRU South Main Street Warren City Number One Bridge, which carries South Main Street over the Mahoning River in the City of Warren.
Motion to approve?
I'll say it.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item forty-six is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permits requested by the companies listed. And I'll list the companies, P and D Trucking LLC, Mother Trucker LLC, GM Excavating LLC, Strife Feller Trucking LLC, David Shetler, Shetler Transport LLC, GNS Trucking, JM Logging and Lumber, Yoho's Action Septic Tank and Supply, and Steelhead Trucking.
Little confusion. What was the second one? Can you read the second one again?
Other trucker.
Okay, that's.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item forty-seven is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed. Northeast Ohio Natural Gas Corp., Ohio Edison, Custom Utilicom, Inc., and Two for Enbridge Gas, Ohio.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item forty-eight is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special hauling permits to haul steel coils requested by the company listed, J-Road Transportation Services, Inc.
Motion to approve?
Second.
For Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item forty-nine is to transfer monies, and this is with regards to Sheriff's Office request.
Um, can I speak before?
Sure. Well, let us make a motion.
Motion to approve?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve?
I'll second. Discussion, please.
All right, so with both forty-nine and fifty, you know that these items came separately a few weeks ago, and Christie and I were able to look them over very quickly before the meeting. And we found that they were initially requesting for the the salaries, the two point two million. We felt one point six was closer to reality, although that even gave a little cushion. In reviewing it a little more, we found that within that request, there were requests for administrative raises at administrative retro within the salary request. So we wanted to make you aware of that, that that would be included in that one point six. And we also wanted to give you some scenarios where you could make it a little bit different. Also, with regard, and I'll talk about those, but I want to talk about both things. The sixteen three seventy-five is for the the uniform allowance. And that also included uniform allowance for administrators who are leaving as well as Sheriff Monroe for one thousand dollars for Sheriff Monroe and a total of seven fifty for the administrators who are, I think, most of them leaving. So we came up with some scenarios to let you know. And if there's no administrative raises or retro, that changes that one point six million to one million five hundred forty-four thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and twelve cents. And I just want to remind you, too, these are non-union employees, so there is no bargaining. The retro that has to be paid for the deputies and the corrections, I believe it's just the deputies, but for those, that's a that's a CBA thing, that's a collective bargaining agreement. It's been agreed to, it has to be paid. But you guys are no, under no obligation to fund him giving his administrators raises till the end of the year or to retroactively make those raises.
Would those be retroactive to when?
You know, it would be the same as August first. Yeah, it was the same as the bargaining unit.
Do we have a me-too that we standardly adhere to in other departments?
Well, he's a separate elective official, so it's, he has discretion, just like I do, to pay my non-union employees what I want. However, I'm limited by what you approve as part of budget. I'm limited by that. I can't pay Tim a million dollars, even though he's. I can't pay him that, even though I would love to. I can pay him what I can afford to pay him out of my budget. Just to give you those scenarios really quick, what the differences are, all right? So if scenario one. So if scenario one, no administrative raises or administrative retro, that changes that one-point-six million to one million five hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and twelve cents. And that changes that in both of those items, the one-point-six in forty-nine and fifty. Just with no retro, but giving them raises to the end of the year, is one million five hundred forty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and four cents, and then.
The retro goes back to second half twenty-twenty-three.
Oh, it goes that far back? Okay, according to what we have, yeah.
That's a big payout on the way out the door.
Pretty far, yes, yes. And then, I'm looking for my, thank you for noting that. And then, if we don't allow for the administrative uniform allowance, that changes that sixteen-three-seventy-five to fourteen thousand, six hundred twenty-five. So you have those options. We can change, we can change those, we can make amendments to those budget or to those items.
What is the amount without the me-too and the retro?
Pardon me?
What is the amount without the?
Without the, without the raise and the retro, the amount for that one-point-six changes to, I'm sorry, one point, one million five hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and twelve cents. So it takes a little over fifty thousand out of that, fifty-six, fifty-five and change.
That's a salary for a deputy, right there.
Yeah. Well, I mean, in light of that, I'd make a motion to approve the non-retro, non.
None, none, none increase, none retro, and what about the, the uniform allowance?
And I agree.
If you were to take that away, I mean.
That's some of your money in advance. Is that paying them back from last year? Is that paying forward?
Sure. Honestly, they didn't include that, that it's already been paid for, or that they're reimbursing. It's just, they just said the uniform allowance.
Yeah, I mean, at this time, I don't have, we don't have a number for that, though, do we?
Yeah, the number for that, so it's, it's just a small change from that sixteen-three. So that, that second number on forty-nine is sixteen-three-seventy-five. That's the uniform allowance, and that includes what has been agreed to in the collective bargaining unit for the union employees and an additional. Sorry, too many papers. An additional one thousand for the sheriff's uniform and seven fifty for the administrator, so seventeen fifty. So if you take that away, it's fourteen thousand, six twenty-five.
That's to cover all this year, you know?
Right, that covers.
I don't have a problem with that.
So that, you'll leave the sixteen-three-seventy-five as is. So you guys go ahead.
Yeah, all right, so your motion is to modify or to transfer monies totaling one-point-five-four-four-seven-twenty-nine and sixteen-three-seventy-five?
Correct.
And I'll second that.
It's seven-twenty-nine, twenty-twelve.
Okay, okay. Okay, so Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Okay, and then to approve additional appropriations.
All right, on additional appropriations then?
Yeah, we would change that.
Yep, so make a motion, Auditor's Office sixteen-three-seventy-five, Auditor's Office one million five hundred forty-four thousand, seven twenty-nine.
And twelve cents.
And twelve cents. And then Sheriff's Office sixteen-three-seventy-five and one million five hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and twelve cents.
Make a motion to approve that. Or second?
Second.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
For Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Item number fifty-one is to authorize the purchase of a used twenty-twenty-one Ford EcoSport with seventeen thousand, three hundred and one miles from Ganley Ford for use by the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department in the total amount of eighteen thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number fifty-two is to authorize the purchase of a used twenty-twenty-three Ram fifteen-hundred Tradesman Kick-Up Truck with eighteen thousand, five hundred and eighty miles from Ron Marhafer Chevrolet for use by the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department in the total amount of twenty thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes. Before we read the next one, Sheriff, if you're listening, can you please send in the check for Farmington before we get to the end of the stuff here in executive session? I'd like to present the check to Farmington Township. Thank you. All right, fifty-three, I'm sorry.
Item number fifty-three is to authorize the purchase of a used twenty-twenty-three Chevy Silverado fifteen-hundred with sixteen thousand, four hundred sixty-eight miles from Coal Valley Valley Chevrolet for use by the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department in the total amount of twenty-six thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
For Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number fifty-four is to adopt a resolution whereby the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners pledges to contribute fifty thousand dollars for two calendar years, twenty-twenty-five and twenty-six, as local match funds to Trumbull County Neighborhood Partnership, board submission of a grant application to the Ohio Department of Development, and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board, to execute a letter of support to Ms. Talia Given Score, Deputy Chief, Office of Community Enhancements, Ohio Department of Development, on behalf of Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership's application for four hundred thousand dollars in financial assistance through the Project Year Twenty-Twenty-Four Housing Assistance Grants Program. And the note, at such time that Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership does not receive funding for this grant from the Ohio Department of Development, the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners has no obligation to provide the funds.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
And just discussion real quick, is Matt Martin and Lisa Ramsey both here? Just want to say thank you for your continued partnership. TNP does wonderful work throughout the county. This is a program that we've spearheaded, I think, six years ago now, and I'm glad to see the board is carrying this through. It's for at-risk, you know, low to moderate income individuals, and is very proud of the program, very proud of the work that you guys do. I want you to know that.
Hey, Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item fifty-five is to adopt the resolution for faithful performance of duty insurance through Corsa versus bonds, as stated below, read a little bit of this. Whereas Ohio Revised Code three-point-zero-six-one authorizes the use of employee dishonesty and faithful performance of duty policy instead of individual surety bonds for officers, employees, and appointees who are otherwise required by law to give bond before entering upon the discharge of duties. And whereas, in accordance with Ohio Revised Code three-point-zero-six-one, the Board of Commissioners must adopt a policy by resolution to allow use of an employee dishonesty and faithful performance of duty coverage document rather than a surety bond to cover loss by fraudulent or dishonest actions of employees and failure of employees to faithfully perform duties. The following shall apply to the policy. Do you want me to continue reading?
Read number four.
Uh, number four, the coverage amount for an officer, employee, or appointee under an employee dishonesty and faithful performance of duty policy shall be equal to or greater than the maximum amount of the bond otherwise required by law for statutory bonding and coverage requirements that specify no amount or only a minimum amount of coverage for the particular officer, employee, or appointee. The Board of Commissioners hereby agree that the amount of coverage provided by Corsa, one million dollars per occurrence, is sufficient for any officer or entity for which the Board has responsibility to determine the amount.
Motion to approve?
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number fifty-six is to approve a one-year contract renewal for the Professional Medical Services Agreement with Philip P. Malvasi, D.O., for the Trumbull County Adult Justice Center to provide medical care and treatment of inmates and to perform certain medical services during the course of their incarceration in the amount of ninety-four thousand, one hundred ninety-eight dollars per month or one million, one hundred thirty thousand, three hundred seventy-six dollars annually. This agreement will be effective for a period of one year commencing December tenth, twenty-twenty-four, and ending December ninth, twenty-twenty-five, and to approve that the county pay one-third of the cost of a three-year medical malpractice tail policy with the additional two-thirds being allocated, one-third to Neocap and one-third being allocated to JJC. And I'll read the special note, Corsa does not recommend removal of the indemnification clause.
Alex Stevenson-Bush, I'll make a motion to approve just for sake of discussion.
Second.
Good morning, Commissioners. So after some back and forth discussion over the past essentially two weeks, we have been able to determine that there was some misinterpretation of the indemnification clause. So one party felt that it meant one thing, one party felt that it meant something different. What we clearly identified was that we needed to clear up that language. We still feel very strongly, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the prosecutor's office, but I'm sure Bill will tell you the same thing. I at least still feel strongly that the language is essentially the same. However, to appease the contractor, we want to make sure, A, that we have a jail. That is the most, of the utmost importance here. We have to have a jail in Trumbull County. If we do not have a medical contract per ORC, we don't have a jail. This contract expires twelve-nine. Again, not my contract, it is the Board's contract, but at the last minute, this insurance thing was kind of literally thrown up last Wednesday. So it got somehow landed on my desk. So with that being said, what we were able to do was talk with the two parties and come to the conclusion that the item number nine in the actual contract, which is insurance, that we would swap out the language that we currently have in there with the language that would suffice for the contractor and would make them feel comfortable entering into this agreement again, should the Board of Commissioners choose to do so. Essentially, the language is the same. So again, what we want to do here is Corsa's made it very clear, and we need to adhere to what Corsa has told us as well, because again, we need Corsa just as much as we need a jail. If we have no Corsa insurance, we have no insurance for this county. Vehicles, buildings, errors and omissions, so on and so forth. So this was a very touchy subject, something that we needed to weigh both sides on and make sure that we do the right thing. Again, with that being said, where we kind of lay, where we kind of aligned on is that the indemnification clause is pretty clear. It's to indemnify Trumbull County and its employees and its agents for any wrongdoing attached to the medical services. The medical services, you're entering into a contract with Dr. Malvasi. Therefore, those medical services should be covered by him and his malpractice insurance, which is why he's asking for an increase. That's also your decision. Again, the indemnification clause, I think the way they were interpreting it was that it would be something if our employees did something, so if a corrections officer, I'll give you the example. If a corrections officer gave some sort of medical treatment, why they would, I'm not really sure, but if they did, the way they read it was that he would be liable for that. That is not what, that is not the intent of this clause. The intent of the clause is that Trumbull County is not held liable for anything Dr. Malvasi does through his medical services. Does that make sense to everybody here? And Bill, please correct me if I'm wrong. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't pretend to be, but.
No, I think there was some confusion with the indemnification clause, and I think that, I don't want to speak for Dr. Malvasi, but I think he kind of misconstrued what we were trying to get at in that, and it had been in the contract in years past.
Point. Thank you, Commissioner. That's a very good point. So again, this clause has been in there. At least we've been able to determine back since twenty-ten. So this would, this is not a new clause. This was not a new Corsa language. You know, I think it's just maybe some more eyes were on it, so to speak, and there was just some questions I needed work through.
Agreed, agreed, and I appreciate your due diligence. I know you've been on the phone since this morning with this stuff, so I appreciate it.
But it is of the utmost importance for our county, so both ways. I mean, no matter what you do, it's important, so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have had discussions with Dr. Malvasi and with the incoming sheriff in regards to this. If we do not have medical coverage in the jail, we'd have to move the inmates out. We're looking at a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day in Mahoning County for a hundred of them. The rest, we'd have to find homes for, and the rest, the judges would have to just release to the streets. And by the time we would be able to put out for bid and get a new, a new medical provider, we'd be looking at about six hundred thousand dollars we'd pay out, and we may not get the same deal that we have with this doctor. He simply came to us and said, hey, I have an opt-out by December eighth. I want to stay with you, but my medical malpractice went up a hundred grand. Can you help me with that so that I can stay and not lose money on the deal the last three years of my term? So we agree to do a one-year deal here, let the new sheriff evaluate the services over the next year, and hopefully come to consensus that works for the jail, and then we keep providing the same quality service that we've had. So I think it's a win-win for everybody, and that little investment of thirty-three grand that we're paying saves us the six hundred thousand dollar nightmare scenario plus that we could be facing, so it's a, this is a good deal. And Alex, I want to thank you for all the work you did in regards to this. And Mr. Danzo, thank you for pulling up a lot of the old stuff that helped us to reassure the doctor that this is nothing new. This is something that has been there, and it's not a change that's going to negatively affect him financially.
And I'd just add that if you look at similar counties with similar demographics and similar population, that we're still paying a much lower cost than a lot of these counties that contract with these big firms, and our claims have gone down, but unfortunately, insurance goes up for a lot of these doctors. So it's a minimal increase, but I think it's, it's definitely a win-win for the county. And it doesn't lock up the new sheriff for a long period of time. If he chooses, and the new board chooses to go out to seek different medical care for the inmates, then so be it. I think that, you know, there's time for that, but in the meantime, we're bridging the gap, so I appreciate it. So with that, I don't know if I need, motion to approve or second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes. Okay, number fifty-seven. Before we get to fifty-seven, Commissioner, if we can do a check presentation to our Farmington Township trustee before we make everyone sit and wait while we do an executive session.
Hey. It's my place, Commissioner. At this time, I'll make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code one-twenty-one dot twenty-two G four, preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations and the collective bargaining strategy for the Trumbull County Recorder's Office. Of course.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
This time, like to reconvene from executive session pursuant to Ohio Vice Code 121.22G4, preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations in the collective bargaining strategy for the Trumbull County Recorder's Office.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
From Malloy?
Yes.
Okay, and at this time, I would like to make a motion to accept the November 27th, 2024 Union ratified 7-0 Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement between the Trumbull County Recorder's Office 3808A and AFSMI Council 8. My motion.
And I'll second the motion and discussion. Mr. Lattell, give us some background on this. From what I understand, and we've been briefed on every aspect of this.
Sure. Todd Lattell, Trumbull County Recorder. We started negotiations on this back in June. The contract ended in July. We've met six times. We ratified about 80% of the contract up through November of this year. We had set a date to finish it on November 27th. We finished the contract at that time in good faith. The contract was voted on by the Union 7-0. It's a good contract. It's a fair contract. It's contracted that would have been negotiated regardless of any politics involved. And it's within line with SERB and other contracts across the state. And it's a fair contract.
Yeah. From what I read, there's nothing crazy in here. It's online with the other ones that we've done, and actually, maybe a little less generous, I would say, to employees than maybe some of them have been. But the Union signed off, and it's okay. It doesn't do anything hinky. There's no hidden bells and whistles. There are allegations and accusations that there was all kind of hidden stuff in here. And I see this being as no different. I know we have more contracts in the pipeline waiting that we need to get to that are waiting. Every day that goes by, we're just building up the payout that we have to, the retro pay we have to pay back out of this year's budget. And there is a retro pay in here, lump sum payment that will be taken out of your budget from 2024. The new recorder will not inherit any new fees other than what the contract is, the simple raises that were there. And we, of course, we have the raise in healthcare, which is going to cost the employees. But as far as retro pay or attorney fees or any of the stuff we have with the legal team or whatever negotiating this contract, it's a clean slate starting January 5th. A clean slate going forward where no one's going to be responsible for any actions you took today, or that the board would take today to ratify this.
Yeah, correct. All of that will be paid out in 2024's budget. That is correct.
Okay. Any questions for you, Commissioner?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Okay.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, okay. That concludes our regular business for today. Commissioner, I've got, we're getting at the end of the year, and we got stuff to take care of that has fallen behind. We got to deal with the dog pound. We got to deal with 911. We got to deal with a lot of issues. So I would like to clean the slate as much as we can on some issues. First thing I'd like to do is I'd like to make a motion to appoint Lisa Ramsey as Nat Large, member of the Planning Commission for term commencing January 1, 2025, through December 31, 2027, in accordance with RC 71322B2, which states in part, "The remaining six appointees shall be residents of the county selected at discretion of Board of County Commissioners." I'd like to thank Mr. De Senzo for his service. And moving on from the position, and Ms. Ramsey, as we saw here earlier, is a vital part of our community, a vital part of dealing in the economics of what we do. And with TNP, she's an exemplary employee and wants to add another thing to her plate, as some of us dummies like to do once in a while, is do more, add more stuff. We did get a packet, and I've reviewed it, and I don't see any reason to further this on anymore. We do have a board meeting next week, and I'd like her to be able to be a part of that. So that's my motion.
Absolutely. I second it.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner, I've got, all right. I got one other thing here, and this is, again, tying up loose ends. When I got here...
Real quick, Julie Green, I'm sorry. She has the mic.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you, Commissioner. Could, would it be possible to also take action, I'm just asking, on the Home Rule and the largest city reappointments as well?
It would. That was presented to us by, by those entities. They present us the candidate, and it's pretty simple for us to just approve who they have. We don't have to screen and pick. The first one would be Home Rule. And I guess I would make a motion to reappoint Darlene St. George to that term.
I will.
Let's see. As a member of the Planning Commission for the term commencing January 1, 2025, through December 31, 2027, representing the two Home Rule Townships located within Trumbull County, and this is based on the recommendation by both Holland and Liberty, in accordance with RC 71322B2.
I will second it.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Okay. And in that same note, make a motion to reappoint David Barron as a member, as a member of the Planning Commission for the term commencing January 1, 2025, through December 31, 2027, representing Trumbull County's most popular city, the city of Warren, based on the recommendation received by the mayor of the city of Warren, William D. Franklin, in accordance with RC 71322B2.
I'll second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Okay, so you have a full board now, planning commission-wise, going into the new year.
Thank you.
Okay. And here's another order of business, Commissioner. When I first got here, HR was struggling. We had interim HR director who, great guy, but I think we've seen since in the current last year and a half, what an outstanding HR director can do in getting involved in every department. We had five people turn the job down that were qualified, that were offered the position, turned it down. We end up going full circle and back to our roots, and we found someone that got SHRM certified, and I believe has been an exemplary employee. She's taken a lot of unnecessary abuse as to of all the women on the fifth floor, which is unfortunate, but she's taking it like a champ. And I could tell you, and besides you and your guidance, no one has helped me further along my professional commissioner career than Alex has. And I've seen, we just had the budget hearings, and it jumped out at me during the budget hearings, when we first hired her, the pay scale went from like 82 to 99. And we brought her in the low level of it because it was kind of untested. We'd been through five people. We needed somebody. We found a needle in a haystack that day. And I think we need to look, and as we promised then, and we talked about it at a workshop when we were discussing pay to make the offer, that there wasn't per se a set plan of a probationary period to adjust it, but we did say we would readdress and relook at things at a later date as far as the pay scale. We had budget hearings the other day, and I saw that the person that handles HR internally for JFS was... for JFS was making way more than what Alex is at. The person just in the sanitary district that handles their HR internally is making way more than what our HR Director is making. And Alex is still over both those departments. They still come to her to do contracts. They still come to her to handle things. She literally handles things for every department in the county. I've seen her tirelessly work on things at nine one one with the contracts, work on the labor contracts with everybody. And I feel has been an exemplary employee and I definitely do not think Trumbull County would ever want to lose her service and her professionalism. So with that said, we had personnel hearings or we had department hearings the other day and we're looking at, we looked again at all what all the department heads make. She is a department head. She has her own budget. Doesn't come out of the general fund. There is money within her own budget to take care of her and her employees, which is a thankless job that she has. And she's also helping to pay out of her budget, people that work in payroll and people that work in other parts, even in the auditor's office, she absorbs some of the pay with her budget. And these people are paid more than her. And they're not even directly her employees in this line of supervision. So I did some research with other counties around us. I did some research with CCAO. I did some research just with HR and I realized that HR Directors make pretty good money. HR is a pretty important position. And I don't know where we would be as a board right now had we not had her the last year. And we're making great strides forward because of that. So with that said, I looked and I came up with something reasonable, I think, that I would like to make a motion on. And I'd like to make a motion to move Human Resources Director Alexandra Divincenzi-Bush, MPA, SHRM CP, effective upon approval, pay range fifteen, eight years of service. And she's at forty two seventy two per hour, eighty eight six six nine annually. I'd like to move her to pay grade sixteen, eight years of service, forty seven oh one an hour, ninety seven seven six six annually. And when we posted the position, again, it was a forty thousand dollar range that we had of where we could have put her in. We put her on the lower end. It's still not the top range, but I think it's commensurate with the work she's done. She's earned the ability to, with the job duties that she's taken on and with the amount of work that she's done in moving this county forward. And now moving in with seven new elected officials coming in that know nothing about the job, that are all going to go to HR first and say, what do I do? That she deserves this. So that's my motion earlier is move her up from fifteen to sixteen and the pay commensurate with that.
I will second that and I will just say that she has been a professional, someone that people come to lean on, whether they be commissioners or commissioner staff or county employees in general. She has exceeded all expectations and she had high expectations, I know, from both of us. But she's exceeded expectations. And with a new group coming in, as Commissioner, as you said, I think it's going to be critically important that she play a larger role in a lot of these transitions. So I will second that and she's very well deserving.
And in additional that, when I looked at HR paying counties around us and counties of similar size, some of them are as high as a hundred and thirty six thousand a year. Most of them are in the hundred and eight thousand dollar a year range, even on their starting salary. So I think by bringing her in, we get the county, Trumbull County got a hell of a deal for the last year and a half. And I think even now, at this pay range, we're still getting a good deal for the product that we're getting. And we're getting a luxury vehicle at a mid-range rental price, thanks to Avis. So.
Okay, so I'll take the vote. Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes, and you are a Rolls Royce.
Yeah. You are a Rolls Royce. And this is well deserving. I'm proud to be able to do this. And contrary to what everybody said, I had no idea who you were when I met you. I had no idea any family involvement of anyone that had previously worked here. All I hired you based on the way you interviewed and your skills that you brought and your aggressiveness with being tough enough to stand up to tough issues. And you've proven it through your labor contracts. You've proven it through the meetings. You've proven it through the abuse, unfortunately, you've taken. And the way you defend everybody up here and the way you care about your staff. So you are getting this one hundred percent based on merit. And as a Commissioner, that's my job, I guess, is to staff the county, equip the county to do the best we can do. And hopefully this is okay with you and you stay with us for a long, long time.
Thank you.
Commissioner, any other business that you have?
No, not at this time, Commissioner.
Okay. And I don't know how many more meetings we're going to have. I know we're going to have one, probably two.
At least one, yeah.
But being that the air is kind of clear here and we're kind of in a good zone up here today, I'm going to publicly thank you for the service you've done in the county. And Trumbull County is way better off by having you here the last dozen years. You've been a mentor to me. I actually ran against you and tried to beat you. I'm glad I didn't because I'm glad I got to work with you and learn from you these last two years. A lot of what I do going in the future will reflect what I learned from you. And I know you're going to be involved in the community in many, many ways. You love this community as much as anybody in this room or anybody watching. And elections suck. They do. Things change. There could be any of us on any given day that could happen to. All we can do is move forward and do the best we can do and be able to proud to look in the mirror every day and know that we did our part. And you'll go down in your legacy and your son will always be able to say, you know, my dad was a Commissioner, he did this. My dad built this building. My dad made this possible. And there are a lot of things in the future, including the Dog Pound, the nine one one Center, the morgue, whenever we get to it, that are going to be there because of what you started. And with this ARPA money, you know, you helped rein thirty eight million dollars on a lot of townships that are going to have ambulances for the next dozen years, driving the streets, saving lives and sewer projects and stuff like that. So you left your mark. You did your job honorably and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner. And it's humbling because it's been a joy and believe it or not, Democrat, Republican, doesn't matter. Commissioner Malloy and myself have worked very well together and it's always been professional and it's always been respectful. And I can only hope that the next group of Commissioners continues in that vein. And it's been an absolute pleasure to serve the people of Trumbull County. So thank you.
Commissioner, can I say something?
You can, Julie Green.
Just real quickly, I just wanted to add to his list of accomplishments. If it wasn't, seriously, if it wasn't for your advocacy regarding the Youngstown Air Reserve Station efforts, that would have never gotten off the ground. If it wasn't for your pushing for the cares for Trumbull, we helped hundreds of businesses at the onset of the pandemic because of your advocacy efforts on that matter. And, you know, spending millions of dollars developing the revolving loan fund. So there's a long list of things that you can be proud of, that you accomplished in your ten years.
I couldn't have done it without a great team and great department heads like Julie Green and like Alex and other elected officials like Martha and everyone else. So it's truly humbling. And I'll give you twenty later. No, it's, to hear.
I appetizer next time.
Yeah, yeah. To hear it like that and to hear it, it means the world to me. So thank you.
It just shows to the talent we have in this county when I look at the department heads and even with elections. You know, we don't, we don't like dummies. We move forward. We just have a lot of qualified people, more qualified people than we have positions, unfortunately. And I look forward to everybody being a building block on the future. We're all here for a little time. We got to leave our mark when we're here. Some, like Dennis Watkins, are here for forty years. Some may be here for four years. And it doesn't matter. Every building block is used to be stepped on by the next person to elevate us to the next level. And especially with what we have coming in the future, we would have no economic boom that we're going to have here the next couple of years had we not laid a strong foundation the last dozen years. And the Kimberly Clarks, the businesses in Lordstown, the Foxconn expansions, the successes we have in the future are not possible unless we had the building blocks and a good solid foundation, which we have every single day and we're building on that. And Martha, with that, ARPA.
Trumbull County Auditor Martha Yoder. We'll start with the sheet that I have, the review sheet, just to give you a review. Have a couple of decisions that we have to make, that you have to make today. First of all, you have the most up to date yes sheet and also the spent and reserve sheet. If you'll look at the spent and reserve sheet, I've done a little bit more color coding on it just because, you know, we got to make it more colorful. Everything on here that's in green is a completed county project. Everything on here that is in pink are projects that where we have everything obligated by MOU so that that money is now safe. We don't have to give it back. The light blue, we have at least one where we need an MOU. And the dark blue are incomplete county projects, but all that money is encumbered through purchase orders. The, I put the sub award money that is encumbered, you know, the grants that we're giving, that money that's already encumbered is in that bright yellow. Of note, the Vernon Township's Road Project, which was, again, this is a count, this is kind of a little hybrid, right? These are not actual awards, right? These are ones that are done with county engineer and there's an agreement which functions in the same way that our MOUs do. That project is actually completed and there were funds that were left. So those residual funds can be allocated and that's reflected in our bottom line. The courthouse chiller and boiler are ninety percent complete. And according to Mr. Slowinski, will not go over the cost in the original resolution. We did have a little bit of money reserved on those in case they went over, but since I've been assured that they won't, I've added that to the available funds. The next on your sheet is the bottom line spreadsheet within your notes. And you have a total available of two hundred and fifty one thousand, eight hundred forty seven dollars and six cents. I will wait for him.
Yeah.
All right? He does. This was, was my turn. I love that.
I love those.
Apologize for that. I had a cough for the last month. We talked too much.
Told you last night to go home and rest that voice. So your total available is, as I said, is two hundred and fifty one thousand, eight hundred forty seven dollars and six cents. We got a little flurry of things from Attorney Rogers last night. And so the only thing we still have pending and it's highlighted on the yes sheet in orange are the modified community family outreach requests for forty one thousand, nine hundred ninety one dollars and the Warren Amateur Radio Association, five thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars and sixty three cents. From the yes list, and it's highlighted in green at the bottom of the, the other green projects on this, on the yes list are ones that you approved today. So they'll be moved to the spent and reserved. But the last one that's in green on there is the Mecca Township. It's the childcare request and thanks to a lot of work from Julie, we were able to get this one ruled eligible and it will be on next week's agenda. We had a maybe list, which is the gray on your yes list on the single sheet. And those were, those were also all found eligible. You had me, I think, two weeks ago pass those on to Attorney Rogers. And so those requests are McDonald Village, a hundred and seventy five thousand for an ambulance, Vianna Ambulance, two hundred and eighty six thousand, and the West Farmington Village Ballfields at thirty four thousand. This is a total of four hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. You have, and I have a typo there, by the way, two hundred and fifty one thousand, eight hundred forty seven dollars and six cents available. Gentlemen, you need to make some decisions.
I would, I would say we move forward with McDonald Village ambulance.
Yes, that we've both agreed on.
And move forward with West Farmington Village Ballfields at this time.
So with those, because I kind of anticipated that that would be, we did, that's two hundred and nine thousand dollars. There's forty two thousand, eight hundred forty seven dollars and six cents left. You need to figure out what to do with that. I also, in, would you like to bring up what we talked about this morning with regard to community family outreach?
Yeah, this community family outreach is still waiting out there. Warren Amateur Radio is still waiting out there.
Is, is, there was.
And we did have that St. Vincent de Paul, Commissioner. I, they did not submit anything into the portal, but I feel horrible. The guy called me and it seems like that may have fallen through a crack somewhere. And I'd like to see if there's something we could do with that, which they have to act really quick.
Well, yeah. And, and the problem with that, we are absolutely up against a wall here. And, and there's a lot of work that goes in to these, working on these requests. We have, we have to do all of this before the end of the year.
But that, but just to be clear, that money for community family outreach and for Warren Amateur Radio Association is already inclusive.
That's inclusive with the yes sheet, right? So that's inclusive.
So that's not doing, that's not asking for.
That's not anything additional. However, there has been an ambivalence over the community family outreach. That's the best way to put it.
I think I want to see that project through to the end. We've invested a lot of time and resources. I know Julie has and I know that.
Julie has a lot. I'm willing to tell you that. Julie has a lot.
And I think it's a worthwhile cause in a, in an area where we didn't necessarily focus completely on. So I'd like to see it through to the end.
All right. So with having said that, I know that there's this St. Vincent de Paul. I have not received a request. And that's kind of hard to do anything without receiving a request. And it's also one more thing for her to work on for eligibility and we don't have a lot of time. To be honest with you, there are a couple other choices besides looking at another request. One is to go ahead and just take whatever is left and which would be if forty, whatever, forty two thousand, eight hundred forty seven dollars and six cents. We could take that and put it in with what we've designated in that MOU for the Planning Commission. There's a lot of projects on there that are in the scope of that, that are not, that are not actually funded. We're sort of looking at residual funds later for those because anything that we have after the first of the year, anything that like when we have a project that is completed under budget and we have those funds, those funds can be, residual funds can go to a project that's already been approved. Or floodplain, right? So it could go to either one of those floodplain or, or another county project that could use more, could use more funding. The other option that I thought of and is that we have three nonprofits that we gave fifty thousand dollars each to, Community Legal Aid, Warren Family Mission, Best Purpose. All of those were, requests were much higher than the fifty that we allocated. We could divide that in three. If we divide it in three, I came up with, I don't know what I came up with. Hold on, let me see if it's on my phone. Oh, four, oh, I saw him here. Fourteen thousand, two hundred and eighty two dollars and thirty five cents each, although one would get an extra penny. Because it doesn't divide evenly. So you could do that. You could do that. You could also look at that other request. It's up to you guys. But we are, again, up against a wall.
Sorry, Julie Green. Can you tell me what they asked for St. Vincent de Paul? I'm just trying to figure out if you're still entertaining that, whether or not it would be even.
Twenty five thousand.
I don't remember.
I don't remember.
They had, they had a hundred thousand dollar.
They're adding something to do with the kitchen over there. I don't remember the details. This is going back weeks now. I don't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was an expansion of their facilities, a hundred and some thousand dollar expansion of their facilities and they asked for 25. Or you said that would help them.
It's a nonprofit, so.
It's probably, it wouldn't be as difficult for her.
The other thing too, if we're gonna have extra money left over. I hate to bring it up, but we, we did give Healthy Hearts and Paws 25 grand before. We're dragging our feet on the dog pound and they are inundated there where I think last I checked, they had over 90 dogs there. And that they're handling because we don't have a big enough facility at the dog pound.
That would help us as a county as well. Absolutely. And I, I, you know, you guys make the decision. These are what I came up with, what we came up with.
Did you, did you check to see where we are on attorney fees out of the 250 that was appropriated for her if we got money left there?
So, okay, I'll, that's on, that's on here. Okay. But what I, as I explained, I've explained to you guys a couple of times. But with regard to the attorneys and the accountants. If we come up with, and I'll tell you where we're exactly where we're at on attorney. We have utilized, we've paid out of the 250, we've paid almost 80,000, 78.6. All right. And so we have 171 left. And the accounting, again, it's, it's low. It's 38 or 35.8, 35.9 that we've paid out. We have about 214 left. Those are all encumbered. So we have a PO out there. We had a PO for both each of those for 250,000. So all that money is encumbered. It's taken care of. We're not going to have to give any of it back. At the end, when we're done and we have money left from those. We can apply those to things like the planning commission and the floodplain. Any project that's already been approved.
So Healthy Hearts and Paws, things like that, we can wait and do that at the end of this.
Well, Healthy Hearts and Paws, I'm not sure about because that was, that was approved for whatever the grant was. But and it was, it this, the, the MOUs, when we wrote the MOUs or I'm sorry, Julie wrote the MOUs, not me. When Julie wrote those MOUs, she included the scope on those in particular. So that even though we're not putting the amount of money in that's, that's for the scope. We could also use it for sanitary because as long as the scope changes. But this is a little different because it's a sub award. We could give that $42,847.06 to Healthy Hearts and Paws. Probably I'd have to check with, with Attorney Rogers because I'd have to look at what it was granted under. If it was granted under revenue loss, that might be a little different revenue loss for them, for the, for the nonprofit. Because some of these grants that we've done were all for the sub awards, were done under revenue loss and there's a cap to that. It's only, they could only gain as much revenue as they lost. But I'd have to look at that one. If you guys are interested, I can investigate that.
That'd be fun.
Because that would be absolutely be a help to, not just to the county at large, but to the county government because they are helping us.
And I, and I think that through your, our county asset budget that, that we're going to be able to address those things with Julie regardless, even if we do have to borrow it, correct? I mean.
It's not even really about our particular building. We've got probably what 20 different MOUs. But I agree with you on the Healthy Hearts and Paws because that helps our dog pound. And I've never met a more committed person than.
So, so let me ask you commissioners, if I investigate this, because we, we are, time is of the essence. If I investigate this and she says, yes, we can, Attorney Rogers said, yes, we can do that. Can I go ahead and have her write a resolution to that effect and have it on next week's agenda?
Here's what I suggest and I don't know if, I know that St. Vincent de Paul has contacted both of us as well. If we can divide that money between the two, because St. Vincent de Paul, Lou Lepro is, is he the one that called you?
So, so one of you needs to reach out to them, give them my email, have them get an application. Or and ask for an application if they don't have one. I will get it to them as soon as possible. Again, time is of the essence. And I need, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for something. All right?
Yes.
I know that that meeting two weeks from now is questionable. If you guys can't do that meeting, we need to do a special one. We gotta get this done.
Okay.
Please.
We can commit to two meetings. We got next week's meeting and then the following week we have some court proceeding stuff. But we will make a meeting happen that week some way. That's the 18th.
Okay.
And, and you guys.
But the 19th potentially, 20th.
Suggestion, you haven't been doing workshops.
Yeah.
Have a meeting on the 17th. Have that second meeting on 17th before your court stuff starts.
Yeah. In the meantime, I will get you.
Yes.
I will get you that information.
Pardon me?
In the meantime, I will get you. I will have him contact you.
Please, please give him my, you've got my email. Have him, have him email me ASAP today. And I will send him out the ARPA application and he needs to get it back to me as soon as he, almost as soon as he gets it. It has to be done because I have to be able to forward it to her. So my task will be to talk to Attorney Rogers about Healthy Hearts and Paws. Have her do a resolution for the 4284706 minus 25.
Yeah.
And then we will get the St. Vincent de Paul in for 25. She did not. She has not told us. She just says, she just said those were still on her plate. Well, we can talk about that. We could also, you guys could look at.
Have a meeting.
We'll have a meeting and we can, we can discuss it. But the other part of that is the plan, and I get what you're saying because we, we would need a resolution to, to resolutions. Would you want to divide that money between those three nonprofits then? Or would you want to add it to like the floodplain?
I guess we don't know because we don't know if they're eligible.
We'll wait then, we'll wait. We just, okay, that's fine. But for now then, for that 4284706, I will ask Attorney Rogers about Healthy Hearts and Paws. For that 4284706 minus 25, we'll do the 25 for St. Vincent de Paul.
I'll get them in touch with you ASAP.
All right. Thank you.
And then we'll fine tune it down again. We'll chop it again.
All right.
See how thin.
And just so that you guys understand, we'll have at least, we have at least one more MOU. We have at least one more MOU, maybe more. A resolution reject, redirect, redirecting the residual funds from Vernon because that has to be redirected. And it'll probably redirect it probably to Mecca because that's over that amount. Okay. We'll redirect it to Mecca. And I don't know if we have to fix Mecca's resolution because of that. I have to talk to her about that. And then possibly some more amendments like we had today. What unfortunately, what Julie and I have found is that we had resolutions, those big ARPA resolutions that have the expenditure category. And some of those ARPA resolutions were made for a certain amount. And then they would award a little bit higher than that amount and not amend the original resolution. So I'm having to, with Chrissy's help, go through each resolution on county projects. And make sure that the amount that we've spent is consistent with the amount in the original resolution. That's what we did with the projects, the ones that were on the agenda today. So you'll have, we, I know you have at least one of those that I have to do and possibly more. Right? I know we're going to have a couple more meetings, but I will also say, Commissioner Cancel Mesa, it's been a pleasure.
Absolutely. Thank you. Pleasure's all mine. Thank you. Okay. There's no other business. I'm sorry. There's Bill Danzo.
Bill Danzo Prosecutor's Office. I wanted to, I sent an email, but I wanted to follow up real quick, especially because Mr. Hart's here too. I know that the Brookfield Mark's Tower site's been contentious and everything. And it's, you know, something that you guys might want to talk about and consider, especially, you know, if there's going to be another meeting or two coming up. But we did get, I've got now two phone calls in the back to back months from ODNR. That are, they're very concerned. They, they really want access to that injection well site by crossing over our, our county owned property. And I, you know, I, I told them, I'll bring that to the board. I'll bring that, that, you know, to your attention to let you talk about it, think about it. And see if you're willing to reach out to them or have someone reach out to them with a position of the board. In terms of, you know, what your comfort level is with them crossing over county owned property to, you know, just to access to do things like inspections and such on that existing injection well.
Obviously it was never to not have inspections or anything like that. It was for the, at least on my part, for the property owner, for us as property owners. And for an adjacent property owner to not trespass on our property. But there are another government agency that regulates it. So I guess we, you know, that there's no real, I mean, standing that we have to say. We can't let you on our property to regulate what you legally have to regulate.
Right. And, and you know, they do have a statute that they point to that, that grants them access over property for that purpose of their official activities. It wouldn't grant any other property owners or any other people access over county property. But of course I, I didn't want to, I'm not in a position to be able to authorize any of that without coming to you guys.
It is a safety thing. If there, if there is a leaking valve, there is a safety thing. They need to be able to inspect it. And so I would say, I would ask, or I don't know how we did it before. But we do allow, we do a letter of to ODNR granting them permission to cross over.
That's fine.
Our roadway for the purpose of fulfilling their job duties.
And if you guys don't object, then what I'll do is I'll work with Mr. Hart. I think there is a gate now across the county owned property there. We may have to work with ODNR to some degree on.
And I guess there's two gates now from what I understand. There's a gate at the beginning and there's a gate on the road now that popped up last week. So we need to figure that out because we are blocking a county road halfway. It doesn't even, the gate is before the end of the road.
Okay.
So we need to open that up because that is a county road. We can't just indiscriminately close off half of a county road.
Okay.
I don't believe so.
And I'll talk to Mr. Hart about that. I haven't been out there myself. I heard that, that gate, the initial gate might be being removed at some point, but I'm not sure. So we can work on that though.
How, what we did, sorry, the Hurton County Maintenance. What we did was we took the gate that was at the bottom of the road that I guess sanitary put in because Brookfield had asked to keep the kids from going up the road and partying up at the hill. We took the gate from the bottom of the road off and took it and took it around to the bend where it now becomes trouble county property. So the county engineers road that goes up McMullen Road stops at that location. And then it becomes county property from there through.
The roads beyond that gate that is not still part of the road.
That's where county property steps.
So it's not county roadway still for another couple hundred yards.
Correct. That's where the road ends and that's where county property begins. So there's the difference between the two sections.
Okay. So now we're, we'll be allowing ODNR to go bigger. It's not just crossing 18 feet of roadway. It's crossing up and in and then over the roadway.
Yeah, on your property to get to the access of his well sites. Yes. So now I reach out to the ODNR gentleman. He would put his lock on the, you know, the daisy chain link of locks. Then he can access that when he needs to access as well as Mark's Towers, the I tower and this, you know, sanitary engineers. So if that's what the board wishes, then I'll reach out to him and he could put a daisy chain lock on and he could do what he needs to do. So that's up to the board.
That's fine.
And we thank, we thank ODNR too for sending letters and being cordial because as the ORC states, they can go anywhere, anytime and do their job and they could have.
Yeah. And to their credit, they have been very friendly throughout this process. And again, you know, I, I know there's been concerns about the well itself and those are, are able to be separately addressed. This is more of a, a inspection safety thing as they put it. So. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. There's nothing else? Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cancel Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes. That's what he asked if there was anything else and that's, that's what includes that.
Sorry. I, I didn't know.
You sure can.
Yeah. Why don't we just, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna pause that, my vote for just a second and discussion and discussion.
Then we'll do that.
Yes, County Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. Just briefly, my name is Dr. Daniel Van Epps. I am Executive Director of the Northeast Ohio Regional Improvement Corporation. We're a nonprofit based in Canton. And hearing the ARPA discussions, I only learned about somewhat of excess only a couple of days ago from the newspaper. But if any of the ARPA does remain, I would like to ask the commissioners to consider a funding request for approximately $105,000. This would be for a financing, construction, operating and maintenance study by Entry Point Networks of Salt Lake City to improve the city of Warren's broadband by, by constructing new buried fiber and conduits to all inner cities, homes and businesses. Okay. What we could do with the network is host multiple internet service providers, multiple content distribution networks. Google, Amazon, the big guys and other users and uses. And they would equally use the network. It wouldn't be monopolized. It'd be open access. That network would connect to transnational wholesale fiber optic lines that are currently routing through the city and around the city. So we tap into that. So this morning I emailed the clerk a copy of our proposal. And the study's prospectus along with my organization's biography and my short biography. Although this network would be for Warren, the county could nonetheless utilize it, at least within the city's limits. There's precedence for this model. Stark County will be sharing the city of Canton's network once it is constructed. After this Warren network could be constructed and once it is generating revenues. The county could receive back the study funding with interest. If this might be of interest, I know this is a brief pitch. But perhaps we could all conference more on the concept at a subsequent meeting, given the end of the year deadline. Appreciate your time.
I have yet to see the, any information on it, but Julie Green from.
Nice to see you again.
Carbon cup.
That's fine. I, I, I met you several years ago at Eastgate. We, we, my name's Julie Green. I'm with the Planning Commission. Our office has been working for four or five years on the regional broadband study. And we've supported numerous private grant requests for ISPs and suppliers. The commissioner has also allocated, I believe, 1 million or 1.5 million in ARP funding through Eastgate to fund the development and expansion of broadband. We're working, we just finished a Connect Humanity Grant program that culminated in a plan that's going to allow us to go after bead funding or private suppliers to go after bead funding to expand broadband availability in unserved and underserved areas. Nick Coggins is the point person in our office and he's working with Eastgate closely. So to reiterate what Auditor Yoder said regarding the end of year. This would, you know, this is a typically qualifiable expense. However, I think probably my recommendation to Dr. Van Epps is to, to reach out to Eastgate Regional Council of Governments who received the funding. And I believe under ARP rules, they can potentially look at your proposal and fund it through the funding that's already been directed to them. Similar, you know, you can make sub awards from, from the awards given by the county. That, have you been in contact with anybody at Eastgate?
We've been in contact with Eastgate. We know what they're doing.
Right.
The, some of the recent studies set for 1.4 million.
Correct.
Mostly in the north part of town.
Correct. Right. Okay.
So when you're talking beans and the other funds.
Yeah. So if there's served, oh, it's, so it's improving the quality. Is that what you're proposing?
Or affordability, affordability too.
Because that's a goal.
Yeah.
Did the city of Warren give you any of their ARPA money?
We stated this is what Rod being studying. Our nonprofit is not going to profit from this. From that amount. Back in a month later.
Perhaps it's because the studies have already been completed. I know of two that were completed in the last three years. I, I, I can't speak to it because I haven't seen your scope of your study. But I do know that the regional broadband feasibility study was completed several years ago that covered Ashtabula through Mahoning County. And then the Connect Humanity. Study that we just submitted, uh, was completed at the end of September. And I understand what you're saying, the difference between improving broadband. Performance and. You know, the benefits within the city of Warren. But I, I also think that that potentially is something that can be funded under the bead through the private. Extending companies who are already working to install. So I, I think that. Our goal, I know it's my preference that the private, private companies do the, uh, the construction work. I don't think that that's, we want to become another. Utility as a county or a city. But we are willing to support it in every way we can. And I, I don't know if that's. Something that you're.
So on the network.
Okay, has the city of Warren entertained this? And they've said. Okay, yeah.
Model would be. Option to operate it, but it.
Yeah.
Simplize last mile network.
Right.
So to date, nobody in the region.
Okay.
They don't, higher levels, they haven't done the nuts and bolts. So that's what we're asking of the commissioners in the. The bonds for that project would have to be paid back with interest. Not pay back the study amount to the county. But obviously after the first of the year, and you can use that for something else.
Yeah, so I, we've, in two thousand seventeen, I think it was, we did our broadband feasibility study. I know that's not the same thing. But, and, and, uh, we were one of the first counties to do that. But is, what, what you're talking about is inclusive, is just. Inclusive of the city of Warren. And, and, you know, as you know, we have very limited authority in the city of Warren. So. I mean, we, we work in conjunction with them, but to fund something that would be completely. You know, under the city's auspices, so to speak, uh, would be, would be more of a joint thing that we'd have to discuss with the city of Warren. We want them to have. Some skin in the game too, as we have with other different projects. So, um. I, I think, I think at this time, I, I'd like to look at the, I, I haven't looked at it. So at least, to at least look at it and maybe reconvene on it. At, at, at our next meeting, Commissioner, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
I have no, I haven't seen it yet. So.
Could I add that with three weeks left in the year, there's, I don't believe there's any practical way you're going to become. Be able to enter into it and agree with the city of Warren to agree to become a utility and to dedicate our ARP funds to it.
Or not be the utility and to, and to sub it out to another utility. It's all very, this is a lot of.
Yeah, a lot of ifs and buts, but in any case. Well, and if, and it's, yes, yeah, it's not pressing. Um, we have a lot of other things, moving parts in motion regarding broadband feasibility. I'm a big believer in collaborative efforts. I think you should probably reach out to Nick Coggins. And Mark Ragazine at East Gate and discuss your proposal with them and see how your proposal fits into the regional plan that we've been working on for seven years. That's my recommendation.
I do understand.
Oh, oh, I'm not questioning that at all, sir. I'm just recommending my. Uh, method of successful implementation.
But, but the lead in this is East Gate through Mark Ragazine and our planning commission, Deputy Director and Nick Coggins. So it'd be best to also contact them if you haven't already. I don't know if you have, but. Okay. Well. But, but there could be a way to fit that. I, I don't, you'd have to discuss it with them. Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
And, and I'm sorry about cutting, you know, I didn't know.
We gotta trust him. He's a West Virginia University grad. So we know he's.
My gosh.
He's one of the two top smartest people in the room here.
Yeah.
All right. If there's nothing else, anybody else before I cut him off again? Uh, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Cancel Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Thank you all.